Okay, good morning. Welcome to staff meeting Tuesday, June the 11th. It's like we got a few things here on the agenda. Manager Stoltz.
Just one thing Chairman, but it's a, it's a big topic. So we're getting close to the end of the development of budget. We'll have a recommended budget next month and our final date to make changes is next Monday, right? Tuesday. So we have meetings individually with you all between now and then. One of the things that we wanted to cover was we had a couple of public roundtables and I wanted Nicole to just kind of go over and summarize how those went and some of the information that we heard in that and she's prepared to do that today. So we'll start there and answer any questions or commission.
Good morning Nicole.
Good morning, everyone. So we did two public budget roundtables this year, and so I wanted to give you a highlight of what we've done in the past. We've had two budget workshops, which always kicks off our budget season usually in January, February. We then have commissioner budget hearings and those vary between 28 and plus, and that's just depending on how divisions and departments present. Then we have budget meetings, which includes the recommended budget that's given by the county manager. We have online public feedback for the budget that folks can get on and submit to our website. We have an evening public budget hearing and then a morning public budget hearing and adoption are both usually on the same day. New for 2025, we decided that we wanted to put out what the budget process looked like for the public. So we put that webpage out there and it's been very helpful and transparent in what we do. And we also held the two budget roundtables as Tom mentioned. One was on May 20th at the WCU Tech NCAT auditorium. And the second was on June 4th at Campus High School. Here's an example of what the agenda looked like at both. We went through the roles of county government. We talked about where we are currently with our financial status. We gave an overview of the forecast and economic outlook. Then reviewed again what the budget timeline was for this year and what next steps were from that specific meeting. We then broke into small group discussions. We gave each group or each discussion opportunity about 30 to 40 minutes. Those were led by leadership team and I want to give a special shout out to those that hopefully groups. Thank you very much. You guys did an amazing job. And once we were done with group discussions, we then got back together and did a group feedback opportunity, which is the data will go over here at the end. And then we had a wrap up. So we averaged just about an hour and a half to two hours at these meetings. They were very informational and they got a lot of positive feedback. So I will go through briefly the small group discussions and just give you guys some highlights. At your tables, you'll have two packets. One says May 20 and the other one says June 4. This includes the results from the large group feedback, but then also any of the small group discussions are in the tables behind that. So you can see specifically what came out of those. But for highlights, I wanted to hit on for effective areas between May 20th and June 4th. The big pieces were public safety and infrastructure, talking about how we maintain our roads well and we offer effective emergency services. There's also a positive perception of elections being efficient and secure. Standards of communication is they were pleased with what we are currently doing with our communication and its effectiveness and also wanted to highlight the tag office and how they have been using technology advancements to improve the process. So areas needing improvement that came from the May 20 group, they talked about the county should reconsider funding for different quality of life entities. They specifically called out exploration place. But they wanted to invest in other areas like parks and infrastructure. There were suggestions on certain areas where parks could be maybe looking at transitioning to flood plains. One example again was the Coweshead Creek. They wanted to also emphasize the improvement of quality of life attractions to retain young workers, but then also had concerns about staff training leading to turnover and high costs. So for June 4th, we talked about positive feedback for fire EMS services, especially in unincorporated areas. For public health and community programs, they felt that the effective management of health programs was including WIC and senior centers were going well. And also supported spending on the zoo and areas for seniors. The highlights for areas of improvement, there was comments about the lack of adequate internet and cell service in unincorporated areas. They wanted to make sure that there was accuracy and efficiency in 911, but then also for property tax assessments. The feedback was that there was frustration over property tax increases and the need for better assessments. For June 4 definition of core services, they talked a lot about fire EMS, public safety, roads and related infrastructure, and also sheriff and emergency communications as part of core services. They also identified interest in property tax abatements and economic development incentives to review and see how that's managed. Any questions so far? Okay. If I'm going too fast, you have questions, please feel free to interrupt. Okay. For budget priorities from May 20, we talked about public safety and public works, the emphasis on maintaining and enhancing those areas. Communication cybersecurity came up to make sure that we're focusing on transparency about county activities. And then also seeing an area of focusing on cybersecurity to continue making sure that that's a priority. For May 20, for a future focus and areas of discussions, the one thing they talked about was reliance on government nonprofits. They wanted to make sure or they wanted it was shared that citizens may rely too much on government to meet their needs. With the suggestion of looking at nonprofits to help serve, to do some of those services. There's also concerns about spending for homelessness and the need to reflect the community needs accurately in the government actions. And then lastly, on May 20, they also talked about mental health and substance abuse, how it was important to continue serving, having treatments, making those a priority for the public. So on June 4th, budget priorities and focus areas, there was a topic on expanding Medicaid for inmate health to reduce taxpayer costs and do cost effective solutions in the jail. Again, that was Medicaid specifically for the jail and their, their purposes. The next one was infrastructure and projects and capital improvement. This included planning for potential projects like the juvenile community complex and admin building. There was also public safety and jail management continuing to improve jail conditions, reducing the inmate population and managing staff issues. But then also was brought up was legislative advocacy, wanting to do more regarding state mandates and funding. And then for the June 4 group, the ongoing conversation and priorities. Homelessness and mental health, again reoccurring concerns with calls for more effective collaboration. Cost saving measures, looking at consolidating services for both the cities in Cedric County and the county for potential cost savings. Talked about property tax reduction and then lastly, community safety and downtown challenges, which talked about addressing safety concerns related to increasing homelessness in the Wichita downtown area. Any questions on the small group discussion? Okay. So now we'll go into the group survey. We previewed this before our event. That was where participants were able to either do this digitally via cellphone or they had the opportunity to do paper if they chose not to do that. The nerd in me was very pleased that we had one person choose to do it on paper and everyone else did it electronically. So I was very pleased to see that. We had 30 participants between the two sessions that participated in the survey with a 90% average engagement. So we'll go through here, the main questions. We asked rank from most to least, the characteristics that you feel best align with Cedric County. And the number one was feeling of safety and then tied for second was value of services for taxes, taxes paid in Cedric County. And also acting in the best interest of the community. We asked for the next question to choose six services that the community felt we've done, we do well. And the top six included county public safety responders, which would include sheriff, fire, EMS and 911. Quality of life opportunities, which is the zoo, exploration place, parks, extension center, interest bank arena. County infrastructure with highways and bridges and then emergency management. Public document records for clerk and register of deeds. And then election management implementation were our top six. Yes, yes. Now, the way I did this was I took the two sessions and combined them. And so that's how we got these percentages. Okay. The next one was which three services do you feel are not core services? What came up was economic development, quality of life opportunities, and then environmental resources. Our next question was the top three priorities for Cedric County government to allocate budget resources to. And the feedback we received was again county public safety responders that was sheriff, fire, EMS and 911. County infrastructure for highways and bridges and public safety management included the DA and the 18th judicial court. We posed the question that if the commissioners were to lower property taxes, what would be the top three areas they felt funding could be trimmed? And what came from that was environmental resources, quality of life, opportunities and economic development. This last question we have here was another ranking one. Tell us what was most important. The most important issues in Cedric County that should be focused on in the upcoming two years. We had a three-way tie for first for defining core services and aligning budget expenditures accordingly. Explore combining department functions with cities in Cedric County for cost savings and mental health and substance abuse services. Not far behind that was homelessness. And then from there we had looking at a sales tax for discretionary services, reducing property tax was an option. And then in last place was researching more ways for public participation. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Lot of data there. Thanks for your work on combining all of that. Questions or comments? 30 participants, you said?
Yes. Now, reminder, this was our first year. We started advertising a couple of weeks in advance, so there's always opportunities for improvement for next year. But we did have a, we did triple R out, our attendance in the second one that was at campus high school. So that was really, that was really pleasant for us to see that we had more people there.
Thanks for the work, everybody. All of us.
How many members of, how many members of the community that are not part of the county were there?
That was, I want to say we had 30 and then there were a couple staff that did participate in the survey. So we made that extra clear at the second one.
That's combining both of them together?
Yes, sir.
I thought we had 24 at campus and eight at.
Eight at the first one, yeah.
But maybe.
I took my number from what I got. Yes, at the, from the actual survey.
Maybe it's 22 and eight. Yeah.
My concern with the participation is that we had staff and electeds that were answering questions. And I think that that's dues the results because we're wanting to know from the public what's going on. So some of these results I don't know if I can rely on because we had people that shouldn't have been answering, providing information.
Sure. And that was definitely something that we addressed in the second round.
At NCAT, that's true. At campus, it did not happen because we've made sure it didn't happen. It stopped it from happening.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Nicole.
That's all we had. I think that just a comment on this. I didn't, there's nothing in there that shocked me. First of all, this, there's no way that this is scientific. The numbers are too small. We have 530,000 people in the county. We have 30 people weighing in. However, it's, it's very interesting to listen to that dialogue. I found it valuable just to talk to people. I think that, and a lot of people ask, what do you do with this now? And I promised them we'd do this, that we would assimilate it, present it to the deciders. So I think, I think even though I was disappointed, it'd be great if we had 300 people instead of 30. But it is the first year, as Nicole said, and it's also very interesting that there's still, even after my masterful dissertation of the difference between county and city government, they still, they confuse city and county government. And I would think that what would be awesome is if we would do something maybe with Wichita next year in one of these public forums. And then you have, when we get into the city side of things, you can refer, we had, we had nobody there to refer to city level issues, crime in downtown Wichita, for example. And there was some zoning questions and things at NCAT that, and the mayor was there and she was answering some of those, but it'd be nice to maybe think about something together. I don't know. If we could definitely continue this in the future, we'll ask you this question again next February at the retreat, what you want to do, but I think it went well and I think Nicole did a great job of organizing it and it was good sessions.
I would say that I had two members of my cab that had commented that they walked in with one perception and then after hearing the one cab, one member from my district, after hearing the discussion from you and clarity of what county government does, and then the financial piece, they had kind of changed their perspective a bit. So it just indicates that more education, more knowledge of uniqueness of county government helps with some of these outcomes and their opinions. So.
If I may throw out, we did record these sessions and they are on YouTube now for folks to go back and watch so they can see not only the presentation from staff, but then also see the results in live as well.
Great. Thank you.
You know, it's hard to interpret a couple of these questions and see, see what the room thinks about this. So on that, I call it a pie chart there on, wherever the first one is on the PowerPoint. It says government services you feel are done, you feel are done well. And the bottom of that, the bottom three are environmental resources, human, mental health services and community corrections. Is this a flawed question? I mean, are they saying they don't think these are done well? I mean, I'm reversing the question. They say they think that these things are done well. That's the top of the list here. County public safety responders has done well. But the fact these other things are not at the top of the list tells me, are we to interpret that they think they're not done well?
The way that I am interpreting the results is that we had to cut it off somewhere. You couldn't pick all of them. And so we wanted to at least draw a line in the sand to give somewhere to work from. With this being the first year, I would consider this more as baseline data. And especially if we look at opportunities for data, data-driven research in the community going forward, we can then better solidify these.
So I think this question is a little bit flawed because it forces us to say that interpretation could be that we think something's not done well. And frankly, they're not trying to say that at all. But that's how you might interpret that. The second question here. I noticed that the next slide are not, name something you feel are not a core service. And near the top, again, there's three that are 0%. One of those three is environmental resources. Is that, or is that not a core function?
So the way that the 0% is, is actually the bottom. So that would be your public safety responders, your infrastructure and your emergency management. They didn't get any votes, meaning that folks did not believe they were a core service. Does that make sense?
No, I think that's not why I'm seeing this. 24% is for public safety is a core service.
It's actually the opposite. 24% of people or the folks that were surveyed feel that economic development is not a core service.
Right. I think we're saying, okay, I said the same. I think I'm trying to say the same thing. I apologize.
It's okay.
So likewise, then 3% of the people they actually so economic development is not a core service. That's what they're saying.
Correct. According to, or no, yes, I'm sorry. Yes. They're saying that economic.
Environmental resources is not a core service. That's what I'm trying to say.
Yes, according to their feedback.
Is it, or is it not a core service? Let's have a conversation. The public doesn't think it is a core service.
Well, 30 people out of a half a night.
I know, but why, what's our argument against the 30 people who said it's not a core service? 0% of the people said that was a core service out of 30 people. And again, this is a flawed question because again, people automatically say, well, obviously we built, we know public safety is a core service. There wasn't enough. Maybe it's a flawed question, but it is curious to me that environmental resources, according to the way this question is worded, the public would say he's not a core service.
So the way that I am interpreting this information and the way that I was looking for in the answers is this is also education because there is a lot of things with environmental resources that are state mandated that we can't say is not a service of what we do. So this is an education opportunity for us in communications and other areas to talk about more why the state is telling us that we have to do these things. And maybe that looks like discussion not only with community members, but the legislative level. And I'm sure that Lynn can expand more on that, but that's how I was interpreting this data is that we need, on those things specifically that are state mandated, we need to talk about more on why.
So we should say, and this, no offense to my friend Kelly Arnold and Ponia Buckingham, but right next to that is clerk and register of deeds are not a core service. That's not true at all. I think they are, again, to even ask the question, when you compare them with public safety, they drop off the list on, on how important they might be to the public, but are they a core service? Of course they are. They have to be. So we shouldn't even ask the question that way. And let me go on. The next one's even, to me is even more bothersome. Community corrections. I think government should do the things that people can't do for themselves. Community corrections absolutely is a core service. I have no question that's a core service. I think with, get right down to it, some of the quality of life things on that second bullet. Again, those are choices we make. I think that is arguably not a core service, but we make a choice to do that. So I think the question here is trouble. I think the question is not delivering what I think we wanted it to deliver. And then let's go on a little bit further.
Commissioner Lobion, the, a survey of this nature is what we consider a perception survey. You have people sit in the room with varying degrees of knowledge. It was fascinating to watch this. There, there are some people that are very engaged in government. These are the top engaged people that show up to a opportunity to hear county government. And then there's some people that aren't so. So when you do a survey like this, you're just trying to gather perceptions of what they think. And then as Nicole says, there's educational opportunities there because I do agree that row office service is mandatory. Environmental services, there's, there's education opportunity based on the perception that we got from this group of people that we may want to market and communicate in the future. So people have a better understanding. So let's qualify it for what it is. It's simply a perception. It's their opinion of what is important versus maybe not so important. But go ahead.
So thank you for that. So and again, the question leads me down a wrong path. Let me just look at the next one. Areas that we're funding could be trimmed. 4% would be the election management implementation. 4% of the people believe that, again, see, again, the question is kind of what is funny to me. The BCC were to lower property taxes, what were your top three areas of funding could be trimmed? 22% says public safety. Are they suggesting we return public safety?
This is the same as the other one. Your biggest number is on the top. So the 22% ties to environmental resources and then goes, so it's opposite. So the public safety responders is a 0%.
I disagree. I don't think that's what it's saying here.
But that's how the survey results showed. That's the data. And I'd be happy to walk you through the paperwork afterward if that would be helpful.
And Commissioner, I'll also note, there's also, I mean, for sure doing this and, and the question, you know, obviously they were given a very limited amount of selections to choose between as well. For all the services we do, but one of the biggest things I'll note is obviously a lack of education component. For example, if you were to lower property taxes and cut environmental resources to make up for that, well, environmental resources takes almost nothing from the general fund. So they don't understand where the funding is coming from. So to even have environmental resources as a selection in that question really made no sense because cutting environmental resources has zero effect effectively on budget. So I think there's, I don't know how you would go about with these questions without a very long introduction of an educational period of where funding comes from for various services and which ones are required by state statute, which ones are not. And I just wanted to, I think there was an education component that just isn't really
Okay. Fully possible. So again, so let me just, and I think there's, I see the interpretation that this room seems to have. I think it's a little bit difficult to I think the question and the graphics are misleading. I'll just say that upfront. The next one here bothers me. The next page here says rank from top, rank from the most to least, the most important following Cedric County issues that you would be focused on. Homelessness is right in the middle of that pack. And right now, this is again, back to education. Do the, does the people, do the people in the room understand this is a big problem for the community? But it's not, it's not a problem for Cedric County's government to, to engage in our budget and our policy. This is being engaged at the city level. So it is being, it is being addressed. But this is not a Cedric County. Again, every government can't solve every problem. We, we, we divide things out. And we're focused on mental health and the city is focused on homelessness. So let's, let's make sure that's that's understood. If we're blurring those lines, maybe to the point, people don't know what, who's doing what. And I'm bothered by the fact that this is in the middle of this pack here.
So just a little history or history on where these came from. The questions were then created and then bounced by the budget team or the, the budget team. And so they reviewed, they had feedback on it. They were reviewed again before we decided to go live with any of these.
And, and the, we talked about this before we rolled this. We talked about it with you all and we made some tweaks and we talked about homelessness and whether it should stay or go. And some commissioners thought it should stay just from a perception, just to get a feel from people on what's important to them, what's not important to them, whose role it is, city or county. They clearly, again, education opportunity here. They think that this is, there's some piece that the county ought to be paying in this and maybe we need to communicate that better than what we have been or educate people. But as far as this community problems of what people want to address, I mean, and so we talked about this a lot. I'm, this was the first time. It's very difficult to run a survey, a perception survey and not get into this kind of issue. If we do this again next year, we'll start earlier with the question because there's clearly a lot of input on, on structure of questions. I think Nicole wrote this, this year, we did the best we could, try to get something out to the public to show transparency and discussion. Understanding that all questions may not be perfect.
I'm not sure this is actually solvable, but I think the, what I see in the survey is, is a, is a general misunderstanding of what county government does. They do not know what we do and they do not know what we have to do. And I don't know how to educate them better, but I'll tell you right now, you can't open the newspaper or turn on the radio or turn on the TV without seeing a story about homelessness. It is everywhere. It is a very popular discussion topic. We need to be very clear that we support Wichita. We, we went to legislature last year supporting Wichita. We want this problem to be addressed, but we're not going to all climb on the same train and try to do this as a joint government. Likewise, they need to, they need to embrace, if you will, the things that the county does. And they should help us communicate to the community. We have a lot of core, core functions of government. In fact, I think there are 16 ones, he would say. There are, there are mandates by the state that we have to do and we do them on behalf of other cities. And it may not be very sexy to talk about registered deeds, but, or the county clerk's office, what they do, but it's incredibly important. And what they do is so important to the people here. And we have to educate them how important that is. Community, community corrections. And for me, my, my personal opinion is one of our biggest topics in here in the county. And it scored low on these lists because people don't know what's going on. I find that very troublesome. I think we have a communication challenge. So anyway, I think my takeaway is I don't know what to do with the budget with any of this. I think it's a great discussion to have in the community. I think it reveals we have a communication challenge. I do not know, I can change one thing in a budget based on what we saw here today. Thank you. I do appreciate the effort. I think it's a good time. We should, we should try to do this more. I think we have to learn how to do this in a way that actually provides the data to make change to the budget. We're not there yet.
Thanks. I thank you, Commissioner Howe, for pointing out some things. I do agree. Nicole, I think, I think this was a great first step at it. In fact, it was seven questions was good, maybe eight or nine, but you're right, not a whole lot. Lynn, your perspective, what you said was very helpful as well. And, you know, like I only got like three things. So that one question about what services do you feel are done well? That a next question right after that would say, what do you think are, are not done well? Instead of going into feeler. Instead of going into fewer more, just add, if we're going to add another one, what do we do? What do you think we do well? What do you think we don't do well? It's a simple thing.
That was definitely a small group question that we we specifically asked that in the small group questions. But we wanted to make sure and give an opportunity to touch on core services since it is a big discussion or has been a big discussion with budget and with the, with the commission as a whole.
Well, then uh, I I think the, we, it's been said a number of times. I totally agree. You have communication opportunities, explanations. Um, I, the fact that economic development are not a core service really for us, it's, it really isn't a core service because we just ha- hired G W P to do all that. So we don't spend a lot other than a couple of people on it. So we, that's an interpretation of of maybe what but economic development in our county is is vitally important for a lot of reasons. Anyway, then the last thing I would say is that uh, if we're going to do another slide, maybe uh, we'd isolate out what what would be uh, in this community, what would be a merged government services? We could even start with police, fire, public, you know, all kinds of stuff. If you wanted to say, what do you think would be a unmerged services? That's, that's my observation. But other ones, I I'm really glad you did it. Great first stab. It's not perfect. We'll do it again. We'll have better. And thirty, and what Tom said is totally right. Thirty people out of five hundred thousand is not something that I'm not, I'm not going to base budget decisions either on, on this data for sure. But it is good for comments and discussion.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you. It's good.
Okay, all wrapped up. Thank you, guys.